Looks like we have several items today.
A few.
Just a few. If everybody's good with this agenda that's laying in front of you. Already, if I can get a motion and a second to accept that agenda, we're gonna move on.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Motion got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He knows. We're gonna move right into number one here. Paid parental leave. The way I understand this, this is a new policy that we need to establish. So, basically, if I can get a motion to accept this policy that's been presented, then we can get into discussion and make changes if we need to.
I make the motion we accept this parental paid parental leave policy.
Motion made. Do I got a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
This is policy 5.305, and it deals with family and medical leave, which this policy addresses the paid parental leave, but our auditors requested that we have a standalone policy that addresses the paid parental leave. So, this would be our new policy that addresses that.
And it would be as presented here.
As presented, yes, sir.
In the red.
Yes, sir.
And the language on this comes from TSBA.
There's not a, can I?
Go ahead, Ms. April.
There's not a TSBA policy for this yet. This is language straight from the law. That was shared to me from the State Department. And, but this is required, so I get reimbursements every quarter based on who's on this leave, and this policy's required for us to get reimbursed. So, there's not a model policy yet, but we had to come up with our own because we can't wait for TSBA to come out with one. So, we may have to make changes to this when they come out, but this is what it should look like for now.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of accepting this as new policy? They say so.
Aye.
Aye.
Any note? Motion passed. Number two, 5.1100 compensation guides and contracts. I do not believe I have any. Yes, I do. Compensation guides and contracts, it's just adding in the language that vacation days be in accordance with policies recommended by the local director of schools and adopted by the local board of education. So, if I could get a motion to accept this with these changes, policy 5.110 with the changes, and we'll get it on the floor and discuss.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Yes. It depends on whether we're gonna go back to the one we presently have, or we're gonna pick up, I think this must've been the TSBA one. The one below it is the one that's got it mixed, right here. This is what we're adding, right there. Okay. This also says down here that a deceased teacher's estate or designated beneficiary shall be paid the value of any unused accumulated leave. And I don't see where that's in either of these. And I think that's a good idea. They bind it. I don't see why it shouldn't go to their families. Can I?
Me either. What was the question at hand? Go ahead.
So, when we talk about leave, we're talking about vacation time. Well, first of all, this, this policy's a little bit confusing. It talks about vacation days, but actually 200-day employees don't earn vacation days. So, really what this is referencing is the set holidays that are put in the calendar. I had to call other districts to understand what this meant because we don't give, we don't give vacation days to our 200-day employees. You actually don't earn a vacation day until you're 11-month employee. So, this was a little bit confused, this policy was a little bit confusing because it's what, the way it reads now, it looks like we would give everybody 10 vacation days, and that's not accurate. So, when it says vacation days here, it's actually talking about holidays. And those holidays are scheduled through the calendar committee, and that's passed when the board, when the board passes the calendar. So, that's why the language was added to that. Now, I did notice that the deceased, the deceased information at the bottom of the TSBA policy. So, we would have to talk about that because if you're talking about any kind of accrued time, you're talking about sick days, which we don't let, we don't allow, we don't pay out for sick days for anyone. Those either transfer over or they lose them when they leave the district. Or holiday, so like if you, we definitely could add it in there, but then we don't need to make the language clear on what we're actually gonna pay out because if we're gonna, if we're gonna, I don't know that we wanna pay out sick days when they have 500. Because some people, you know, accumulate days, and so it could be very costly to district if you paid out all of the leave. So, I did not put that in there. I simply just added the language to this policy. I didn't even look at the TSBA. I noticed that that was in other districts' policies, but it wasn't in our current one. I think it's a choice. I don't think it has to be in our policy, but obviously you guys are, can make that recommendation and we can put it in there. But I didn't change anything in our current policy other than, other than to add this to the law. Add this language to make it less confusing on what those vacation days meant.
Those sick days do count in retirement, though.
They do.
So, for every 20 days of sick leave, you accrue a month of service, which is paid in through our retirement TCRS.
And we typically, when we, we've had a few situations where we've had deceased employees, and we have paid out their final paycheck and any earned holidays that they get, but we have not paid out sick days. Or vacation time. Vacation time is also required to be paid out. But sick time, we don't, so like if we have just our normal employee leaves the district, someone leaves the district to go, we either transfer those days, or if they don't, we go to another district, they just stay with the district. If they come back within five years, they get those days back. Or if they don't come back at all, they just lose those days. We don't, we're not, we're not required to pay out sick time to anyone. That's just kind of our practice of what we've done in the past. So, I'm saying that's not, if that's something y'all choose to want to do, we could definitely put it in there, but we need to talk about, I feel like we need to talk about how much that could, if we're talking about sick time.
We probably have to make it up to this number of hours if we did it.
And I would have to probably ask our auditor if we're allowed to pay out for sick time. Because right now, we don't, it's not common practice to pay someone for their sick.
But the red line you put in sets us up to work towards coming up with that plan, correct? Because right now, the current policy is just hand and stocks.
Yeah, so right now, that just clarifies because I didn't want, I didn't want a 200-day employee to read this and say, "Where's my 10 vacation days?"
Yeah.
Because that's gonna, that's gonna happen.
Yeah, it's gotta be in accordance with the policies recommended by the director of schools and adopted by the local.
And there are other districts that have that language, which is confusing. I understand why you're thinking what you think, but it's not. They don't have vacation days.
No, what, the vacation days I saw, that, that didn't make sense to me because... I mean, they're off during the summer. I kinda figured that was...
We can't, I mean, do we need to pull this one out and relook at it, the deceased part?
I don't know. I just hate to see teachers not get what they've earned. But if you say they haven't legit, well, if they manage to come to work every day that year and they don't use their sick leave.
They earn 12 days of credit towards retirement. Well, 10 sick days in...
10 for teachers and then 11 for 11 months and then 12 for 12 months.
In your two personal days, tack into that, which total 12. And two years of that, you've earned a month plus of service at point whatever the rate is in TCRS. So, you could actually, if you earned over 200 days at the end of your career, you could quit year 29, and you're gonna get, your retirement is gonna show 30 because of those accrued days, sick leave days.
Now, when, I don't totally understand how we do it with our retirement. When the teacher passes away, is there retirement left in theirs? Is it like a 401K where they've done it?
You declare a beneficiary.
And you can?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they could declare a beneficiary for their...
Yes, ma'am. You can, you can draw your retirement four different ways, and you dang sure don't want me to re, go through those.
No.
But, but you can, you can draw little or none in your spout. You, you're gonna draw a bigger number. Your spouse gets nothing, or your beneficiary gets nothing. You can draw where you get some and then they get the same amount. I mean, there's four different levels that you can draw.
So, basically, the extra days have already been put in there if they retire. I just don't wanna see them lose it if they earned it.
And I'm checking, but I'm pretty sure that when, if someone, and we haven't had, but maybe a couple of situations with a deceased employee. I think that you can turn their days in to TCRS, and it can help benefit their retirement, which their beneficiary would get. I just need to verify that.
Okay.
But talking about paying out for sick days, like just making a payment to the state, could get pretty expensive if you have a 30-year employee who has 300 days.
If it, if it already went into their retirement.
I think so.
And I feel good about that. They didn't lose it. It went into their retirement. So, it's already there.
They're being credited that, in years of service, which improves their retirement.
It made it sound like they're gonna lose everything.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and I'm like, all right.
I mean, this one's not an urgent one. If we need to pull it out and...
Well, we got a motion on the floor right now to carry it on through. One way to look at it is if we carried it on through the way as presented, if we agree with that today and we pass it today, when it goes to the full board, it could be broken out as a single agenda item, or we could break it out of general consent at that time. It just depends, you know, if it's something you want the full board to make a decision. That's certainly one way to do it, is we, we pass it right on through right here and...
No, I'm actually good on it.
Make it its own agenda item or break it out of general consent.
Now that I see that it does go into their retirement, that they don't lose it, I'm, I'm good on it.
So, the actual motion on the floor right now is if we wanna accept this with the change that's presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three, 3.600 insurance management. Updated by Ms. April and Mr. Kelvin. Ask Ms. Nelson to explain this policy.
Would you like me to explain?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I said Kelvin, not Kevin.
So, we, first of all, I've added that we just have cyber, cyber loss and liability insurance. We're required to have that, so I just added it to our list of insurances that we currently have in the district. And then went down into the group health and add dental vision and life because we do offer all of those things. The board pays for part of those things. And I added that into the language in the first, in lines 14 and 15, that we offer, we provide dental vision, life insurance for all full-time employees. And then lines 19 through 23, so a little bit of history. Back in 2016, the state of Tennessee sent out a letter to all districts that approved districts to not offer spouse insurance for, for... So, if you're an employee and your spouse is covered through a group plan at their employer, then the district could cho, could choose to not offer spousal insurance to, to that employee. So, in 2016, it was on the board agenda. I have it, September 12, 2016. It was on the board agenda for the district to go forward to not offer spousal insurance to employees whose spouses already are provided insurance at their current employer. And it passed unanimously at that time. So, simply, so we've had, this policy should have been updated at that time, and this should have been included in this policy because it was a board action, and we get questioned on it every year, but we've had a lot of questions this year on this particular issue. As of right now, it stands, I have board action on lines 19 through 23, which speaks to what the board intended to do at that time.
This is cleaning up the language in the policy.
This is just, just kinda, yeah, kinda, and it should've been added to policy at that time, and it wasn't. I don't know why, but it was, I have, like, if y'all want, I have brought copies of the board documents at that time on what the language was, and I can pass those out. But this is just simply cleaning up that because there just seemed, I mean, there's been a lot of confusion. We've had, you know, a lot of employees ask, and so we're just trying to clean up this language in this current policy we have right now.
And we're adding one law, TCA 827205.
Right, and so then, yes, so then, if you go to the next page, I've cleaned up the annuity section where the board's supposed to approve any new annuity for, which is your TSA companies before they are allowed to contact employees at our school. And then, just kinda restricting a little bit more about when they can visit. A lot of other districts have this in their policy, that they're not allowed to contact employees during their school hours. So, kinda cleaning the annuity section of this up. And then going to the retiree section, added, we added a little bit of language in here because we had some questions come up. We've had some questions come up about, not how much you want me to go into on this, but we've had some questions from some employees.
So, the way it previously read, Ms. Westmoreland could have taught in our school system the way the language, the flexibility, which we took the flexibility out. She could've taught in our school system for 15 years and left our school system and gone taught at Buck Dussel Elementary or Middle School up until our last year. Come back here for one year, and then we're paying her insurance for the rest of the time. Well, I think the intent of, of the change is your 15 have to be your last 15 years. We wanna reward people that, yes, finish here.
So, the language, the language is added for the last 15 consecutive years at the time of retirement with Coffee County Schools.
And then there's your writing on that there.
Yes, sir.
We currently pay, I think it's 55%. So, the state pays 45%, and then we pay, we pick up the 55%. So, when you retire, if you're employee-only insurance, you get your insurance completely free until you're 65. So, we're trying to clean up this language a little bit to cover, cover that. I think that that was the intent, like Mr. Hargrove said, that was the intent when this policy was written. And then, yes, I added a new code at the back, at the number six, which goes along with lines 26 through 28, that anyone hired after 2015 will not be eligible for the same benefit as someone hired before that date.
Reason for that is they are no longer legacy. They are...
A hybrid and...
A hybrid. And that's a different TCRS, and one in the legacy.
I will say that, talking to our insurance broker, we are one of the only districts that pick up the gap in the retirement, in the retirement plan.
Any more discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we did. The law changed in 2022 or '23 that we had to do that. We did, and the auditor told us that the law had changed. He sent it, he told us, and then, so we did, and we changed from Blue Cross Blue Shield to dental vision and life because the board pays part of it. We should've got ticketed before the board, but we did not know the time that the law had changed that we had to do that. And so, when he gave us our audit for that year, he wrote us up, not wrote us up, but he gave us a observation to next time when we have to bid those out. They have to go before the board, but yes. So, that law changed, and they did not communicate. So, like, I get no, well, other than the...
I don't think you were...
Other than the TSBA law, the laws that, well, not TSBA, but the legislative updates, it was in the legislative update for that next year, but I don't think it was included in time for us when we changed it, so we basically...
It was in our policy then.
Gave it, yeah. Yeah, so that's supposed to happen, and we'll do that every time now because we're supposed to be doing that, so... And that's what I think we just did in the September board meeting. For anything that we changed, we'd get you guys to prove it.
Any more discussion?
We need a first and a second.
We already did. Yeah, we did. We got started on it.
You made it.
We'll do it again. Can I get a motion to accept this? As presented?
I so moved.
Can I get a second? Any discussion?
I wanna make sure I'm 100, 100% clear on this. You know, looking at page three, the criteria there, what would be the new criteria in order to receive the Coffee County Board of Education contribution? Will this apply only to employees that are hired moving forward, or would this apply to current employees? For example, let's say someone, let's say someone worked five years with us years ago. They came back a few years ago, and they're working their way toward 15, or maybe they've already gotten to the 15, and they are still with us. But it was not in consecutive years. You following me? So, does this apply to only newly hired people, or does it apply to people that are already employed?
It's a great question. I think that's a legal, from, from this point, or actually the board approval of the policy moving forward.
You know, and I guess just an observation concern, and I have no idea how many or if there are people in that situation, that, chance there are. Could it be that someone, maybe as they were considering whether to take a job here, might they have been considering this, the, the, the policy that we're gonna change?
Also, the intent of it was to reward people that retired from Coffee County Schools. That was the intent of the policy. People jumping chip just to come take advantage of the, of this.
I, I understand, I understand.
It's more of a loophole that is trying to be closed.
Yes, sir.
The beginning was one thing, loophole being closed from what was just being missed out, but then...
And that might be something that, I mean, I, we can call legal, for legal advice on when that would actually tip or be in, be in play. It's a good question.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
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 All those opposed? Then to item three, pass it. Then to item number four, 6.200 attendance.
Okay, this was a, previously gone to the first reading, and then we, we pulled this to go back to policy committee.
Like Ms....
Ms. Beth.
Melissa explained to me that when she highlighted in the yellow, this was not being taken out. Which at the time, I thought that we were removing this.
This looks much cleaner than what went through.
So, I have no problem with it as it stands here if all the yellow is staying.
Well, what are we, hang on before we go into discussion. So, we're looking for the amended of the highlighted in yellow. Okay. All right. So, I'm, we're gonna need a motion to amend policy 6.200 to the highlighted copy we've been provided here.
No, that's the TSBA copy.
The yellow is TSBA. The red would be the recommended changes.
Yes.
Red should be, okay. So, the motion would be to accept policy 6.200 as the red changed documents you have in front of you. Yeah. And we'll get this on the floor.
See, this was my problem. It is marked out.
Okay, so I talked to Dr. Cornelius about this, and this is...
Let's get, let's get a motion.
Oh, I make a motion that we accept.
Okay.
The tenant's policy.
All right. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded to accept policy 6.200 with the changes in red that we've been provided. Now, any discussion?
So, what's on here, the release time course? That is all marked out because currently we do not offer this at the high school. So, he said that was not related to us.
Could you repeat what you said, what we no longer offer? What, what are you referring to?
So, on the back of page, it's page four of six.
Okay.
Says release time course.
Oh, yes.
It's talking about religious materials and being excused for one class period per day.
Yes.
And when I talked to Dr. Cornelius about this, as when it was pulled, he said that we do not do that, and that is why it is marked out because here in our county, we do not offer that.
Why don't we offer it? And that's Mr. Parsley.
I, I'll say we've never had such a request. I mean, I, you know, it, it would definitely be an unusual request because our students are required to have X number of credits to graduate, 23 credits to graduate. They're on a schedule to do that. And I'm just thinking hypothetically, if someone had a daily or a weekly something at a certain time, and, I mean, they're, they're gonna be missing a class required to graduate.
Mr. Chair. A little bit on top of this one. I believe a lot of times what this works out is, let's say that we had a church that's across the road from the school, right next to the school, and they wanted to go, be released to go to that church, have a class, religious class, then they come back to the, the actual school for the rest of their period. And, and we don't have it top set. It's, it's not even in the, the realm of what we got at our school.
Well, I realize...
So, it's actually leaving the school and then coming back to the school for a religious class.
Which line are you on?
It's never, it's never, honestly, never been, never been requested.
Which page you on?
Four of six.
Page four of the red, red one.
Release time.
Okay.
I understand it's not come up.
That's where we are.
But I don't see any reason to take it out and not have the possibility of it if it's something that a parent wants to do. I think I looked up some of these here, and I think it's actually allowed by law. I think I looked up some of these here, and I think it's actually allowed by law.
Mr. Parsley. No, if you, go ahead.
Well, one thing, I, as I, I'm looking over these words here, a- and one thing I notice, lines fifteen and sixteen, "Students shall not be excused during any class which requires an examination for state or federal accountability purposes." Well, not every class has an examination for state or federal accountability purposes. But when you consider all of the classes we have that do have those, whether there be T and ready courses within a course test, whether those be, um, AP, AP courses would be included because there is state and federal accountability tied to those now. We also have CTE classes with state and federal accountability tied to those now. It would leave very few classes which could even possibly, uh, be utilized as a class for a student to leave, it would be very few. There would be some, but, but there wouldn't be many.
My question is, does the state allow open block?
I mean, I, honestly, it's just not something I've considered, I, I mean, it's, it's.
Our students have full.
Right.
I'm not sure we're allowed to give them an open block.
Right, I, 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 it's, a- as I said from the onset, it, it just, it, it, it's, it seems to be such an unusual thing, a student to leave during the school day on a regular basis and come back, I, I ju- we just never had any, whether it be for a religious reason or any other reason, it's just, we've never had such a request, now, and I understand, it never happening before is not a reason not to do it. But it, it's, it'd just be highly unusual.
It, it also, if it's in law, this, this law supersedes this policy. So even if it's taken out, if somebody ever brought it to the, the school board, it's in law that it is allowed, that doesn't mean it has to be in our policy. Right now, it's, there's no reason it's been in our policy because we don't have a situation that warrants it needs to be in our, in our policy. But if it's in wa- in our law, then still it can happen, it's just not, we, we don't have it, so why have it in our policy?
Well, I'm sure.
That's a good point.
Well, I mean, as a parent, you can check your child out of school without giving.
Right, it just, it would not be a part of a, you know, necessarily a, a school-approved daily dismissal, but absolutely a student could be excused with a parent note, um, up until they're out of parent notes.
Right.
How many parent notes are allowed?
Uh, fi- five parent notes per year, that'd be five days per year.
Well.
It, it is a, I mean, I, in my opinion, it is a, a pretty, well, it's, it's subjective, uh, to a great degree, I think.
I don't think, I don't think we're supposed to be in that business here today.
Oh, and I guess hypothetically, hypothetically, if it were a, if it were a family that wanted to have their private Bible study, let's say, at, at ten AM on two days a week or whatever, you know, we would be, I guess, making a judgment as to whether or not that would be acceptable reason to.
But Mr. Parsley, aren't they enrolled in a class?
They are, that, that, and that, that's where you run into the rub, is they're enro- they're going to be enrolled in a class.
And then who's taking responsibility for that?
Well, it says, it says here that we would not be responsible for transportation, but, you know, I think, I think we'd need to check on some legalities if we ever got into this, doing this.
It does say, um, excluding following language, if the board wants to allow students to receive credit for these courses, upon submission of the student's transcript from the entity that provided the time released course, the student may be awarded one unit of elective credit. The director of schools shall develop procedures with secular criteria for determining whether credit shall be, uh, awarded. So it could be if they start this from the beginning of the year, that it's something they could get credit for, so when they take off and go to this class, they're not missing one of their credits for graduation. So.
But. And then we're, we're setting up a course, yeah, we're setting up a course then that we're giving credits for to leave school that we're expanding into something that we don't have a lot of control about, that we won't have the control over the student when they're at wherever this is. And as bad as, as bad as I, I like it, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to get into it here on recording to talk about it, but we're, to me, this is another one of those Pandora's Box things. I don't think we should open.
It could be a slippery slope, for sure.
Ms. Beth, I'm not sure I know of anybody in.
I don't.
That offers that credit.
Well, I think it came up with TSBA because a law came.
Right. I mean, we offer, offer a Bible.
We have a Bible as literature and history course.
Right.
Uh, it's, it's a one semester course, uh, and it's an elective course. That is the only class in my mind that, that might possibly meet whatever, you know, criteria might be set for a, a, a class outside of our school day. I, I just can't imagine what it would be that would, that would match up with the standards of the classes that we teach. Um, y- you know, we've got core standards for every class, I mean, the, the Bible as literature and history might, would probably match up some. Uh, but I can't imagine anything else matching.
I'm glad we're having that course.
Uh, you know, I.
No, I think the, the principle, the board actually is the one. No, no, we wouldn't come up with it, it would be something that the student wanted to participate in, the parent wanted them to participate in, and they could show reason why it should be approved as a course.
No, the, the last sentence, uh, well, i- of the paragraph, lines twenty-six, twenty-seven, "The director shall develop procedures with secular criteria for determining whether credit shall be awarded." I, I just, I can't imagine what those procedures might look like. Possibly, possibly.
It could be a cellus, it could be a examination at the end, it could be different things.
Right.
Same kind of procedures that we have for any other courses.
That we would accept it for credit, um, let's see if it, if it says it, uh. I don't know that it says who would determine that here.
Well, line twenty-four says, "If the board wants to allow students to receive."
References the board.
So it makes sense that the board would approve that, in my opinion, the way I read that.
More power to them.
So, so in other words, if I wanted to come up with a class of moral instruction, then I could present it as a parent, I could present it to the board, and then we would decide whether that was a credit or not, and I could leave class.
Leave school.
Leave school.
It looks like this, what this is suggesting?
All right, thank you. Oh, there's a paper that Melissa handed over. Thank you.
I still have questions, but I think we've got enough people to pass it on through. I think we've got a majority without me, so.
And we first, I'm thinking of this one, so we need to. It's in discussion still. Okay. Motion on the floor is to, uh, accept six point two zero zero with the red changes. We've been in discussion, if there's any, anybody wants to make an amendment, or if we want to run this through with a no- notation for the full board to consider and reconsider at the next meeting, I'd make two, I think, discuss, a little, little more in depth and further if we want to do.
Well, I like the fact that, of what Kelvin said, that if it's in the law, a parent can fight for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, law, law is always going to supersede any of our policies. And is it in the law?
Yeah, it's, it, it's in the law.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? None. Thank you. Next up, number five, four point six oh five, graduation requirements. TSBA recommended distinguishing between the minimum credits required to graduate per state law and additional credits, local credits requirements. Current policy states that twenty-three credits will be required to graduate. And, uh, so I guess we need a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Accept the red copied out version that we've been supplied here. Do you still make that motion? Or stay with the one we have?
So.
Whatever motion they want to make.
On, on this right here, on this graduation requirements, they wanted it divided out by what state and what's, um, required. So twenty-two requ- uh, required credits are required by the state law. And then they can do one, we require here at Coffee County twenty-three credits. So one can be an elective or something else, but they just wanted that language in there that it is divided up.
So there, there's really nothing, the wording is changing, but it would not change what we currently do. Uh, if that makes sense.
Not my understanding.
You know, we, we currently require twenty-three in the district because of the, the one additional elective that we have, uh, expected from students. And if I'm understanding this wording correctly, it's simply saying uh, that students has, has achieved the twenty-two required by the state, plus the one elective credit that we require as a district. In other words, if I'm understanding correctly, we would still be requiring the same thing as a school district in order for a student to graduate. Is that how you all understand it?
Second. I make the second.
Say that one more time, Mr. Parsley.
My understanding with this wording, you know, w- we, um, the state requires twenty-two minimum credits to graduate. As a district, for years, we have required twenty-three, uh, an elective tacked on. And, uh, g- going back years and years ago, part of that is related to the fact that we're on a seven-period school day, you know, i- if, if a student takes seven, eh, earns seven credits per day, you know, and so forth, you know, you, you have a, a, a good opportunity to earn well beyond the twenty-two. So for years, we have required twenty-three ourselves. This wording does not eliminate that, it simply specifies that we are requiring the twenty-two plus the one elective. As I read this, it would not change anything we're currently doing, it just changes the wording.
Correct.
Is that?
Yes, sir.
You all's understanding?
Any further discussion?
I, I, I would say this, if ever for any reason, we were to change, um, you know, our class schedule at the high school, for, for any reason, um, whether that be a block schedule, or whether that be a six-period day, or something like that, to me, it would be sensible to alter the number of credits we require.
We would have to revisit, definitely. Many things, probably. Yes, sir. Anything further?
Uh, so. So th- there's quite a biz- bit of civics content in our United States government class, uh, but there is no course entitled civics, and so.
It used to be.
There, there was, I, I remember taking that as a ninth grader when I was in high school. Uh, but there is no class here called civics, and, uh, I'm sure there are probably some school districts that have a civics elective. Uh, w- we teach lots of the civics content in United States government. And, uh, our students all are required to pass a civics test in order to graduate. Uh, and currently, Ms. Lauren Jernigan, one of our social studies teachers, works with every single senior student to pass that test during the school.
I think it'd be good if you just don't ask, they knew who the governor's man was, who the, who the mayor is of the county and.
I agree, and I, I think, uh, I, I really believe, you know, um, I, in, you know, one of our, one of our two government teachers is, is Andrew Taylor, and he's done that for years, I think he's got five classes per day. I know he does quite a bit of local government in his class. I would like to think that, I, you'd like to think all of the kids can name those things, I don't know that they all could.
That's true, I mean, to me, that'd be more suitable for a civ- so there's not a civics, not a state civics test, it's what we decided to.
We, we, um, we make the test, we make the test and provide the test, it's not provided by the state. And I, I, I'm familiar with the test.
That's something to look at in the future because that's very important, that the kids know things that matter to them.
Right.
In civics.
Um, yep, no, no.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state so by stating aye.
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 Any, any opposed? All right, number five passes. Number six, one point nine zero three charter school oversight. I don't, uh, really know what we've got going on with this. I'm going to turn this over in just a minute if I can get a motion to, are we accepting a new policy or is this current?
We do not have policies on any of charter stuff right now. So these are sent down.
This would be new policy.
These are new policies sent down from TSBA, and the only thing that we've changed in them is names.
But we have to have these policies now.
Should get, supposed to, I mean.
So.
We'll be using our own.
Our motion for agenda item number six would be to insert a new policy, one point nine zero three charter school oversight, and we get a discussion. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion. Well, that's, yeah, just who we have.
Yeah.
So you want to just put it director of attendance?
That way it would be.
Okay.
That's a good.
They might get mad at us next week. New policy. Any discussion on this with the change, just removing the name of the government?
As far as you know, Robert, have you ever had an application for a charter school in Coffey County? Has anybody?
I don't know.
What kind of discussion in the past, if I may, that's entirely different from that one.
Right, right. That would be turning one of our schools into, which is not a bad idea.
All right, no more discussion. All those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Number seven, this would be policy 1.901 charter school application. I'm assuming this is under the same thing. It's just getting some policy established. So if I could get a motion to establish this, I don't see any writing on it. I briefly scanned it, didn't see any names. So it'd be accepted in this document and then get it for discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So we have to, we have to have a policy. In other words, we want our school to get a matter of...
Yeah, still got to have a policy.
It just ensures that we're able to deal with it if...
If it comes about.
Adhere to certain standards if it were to come about. Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion on this? Anybody speak up? All those in favor of accepting, please say so by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Number seven, agenda item passes. Number eight, 1.905 charter school renewal. Once again, I believe this is a... This needs to be established.
I make the motion, we accept the charter school renewal policy.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting, please say so by stating aye.
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 Any no? Motion passed. Number nine, 4.301 interscholastic athletics. I think there is a note here that TSBA has just added a provision on virtual school and home schooled students' participation. And that's what you've been provided is one that has been that way or fixed with it. So I need a motion to accept policy 4.301 interscholastic athletics. Accepting that change. I'll second it. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Anybody want to discuss?
What is this on the second side that's been crossed out? In the front, it said including home schooled students. And on the back, it said it crossed out the eligibility of home schooled students for public school interscholastic activities. Home schooled students, they can participate, but they're not covered under our insurance. Okay, so this is an insurance thing, okay.
It says they're still permitted down at the bottom, added in.
Okay.
I was just curious. Do you know where that came from, including home schooled students on the insurance and physical examination? Because I don't see any on the TSBA policy either. I was just curious.
We worked on it. We had several people that gathered over fall break in Mr. Harker's office, and they crafted the language.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just curious, because I never knew that they knew this stuff.
Came up with their language with Dr. Blessing, Ms. Cole and I? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the changes, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda item nine passes. Do y'all need to take a break or anything for a minute? Is everybody still good to keep rolling?
Let's do two more.
Two more. Agenda item number 10, 4.406, use of the internet. Got a note here. Students are prohibited from accessing social media platforms using district internet except when expressively, expressly authorized by teachers for educational purposes. I think, I think that to get a motion to accept this, we'll turn it over to Mr. Dane Wood. Got a note here.
He reviewed this.
Can I get a motion on the floor here to accept this? And then second, and then we'll go from there.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made, and I get a second.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion or do y'all want to hear from Mr. Dane Wood?
Well, he reviewed this, is why his name's on here. He reviewed it to make sure that this is our current policies and that everything is correct on here, so... But if you have any questions, I'm sure I'd be glad to.
The basic, the basic change was just prohibiting access.
With per state law.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't think we've got a big issue here. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Dane Wood? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, yes. Agenda item number 11, 4.601, reporting student progress. I've got a note here, students in K through eight, their scores on the most recently administered universal reading screener shall be included along with the results of the dyslexia screener.
We include that within their report cards.
Okay.
So it's an additional part of their required by law now.
And we're just making sure it's in policy because it were followed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that will be provided into the red copy, correct? Red outline copy. So if I can get a motion to accept this one or whichever, then we'll get it on the floor and we'll go from there.
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
That's a motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
What was the general thinking? Sorry, Dan.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
What was the general thinking in before we had where they could lose their license? Have it revoked if they were not, if they were academically deficient? Have we taken that, seems to have taken that out now?
Well, so the law changed, and I don't remember exactly when, but fairly recently, the law changed. Formerly, a part of the law was that you had to meet both an attendance requirement and an academic requirement. And that portion was taken out of the law. So I'm assuming that the board policy is being changed to reflect that.
It attaches your driver's license, it attaches the graduation, and we don't follow either one of those.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Got a question. This might be crazy, but, and we may have covered it before, but just out of curiosity, on this policy 4601, in the right corner there, it says issued date 1406. Does that mean that's when that was first developed?
Yes.
Okay, and then issued date 12913. What does that mean?
The issued date would probably be when it's been revisited, last time it's been revisited, correct?
So, yes.
So it's 12 years since we revisited that?
Yes. And that's why that we are trying to get these on the...
But the law just changed, so there probably wasn't any...
It's been recent.
I mean, I'm sure it's been reviewed. Yeah, it's been reviewed every year, but no changes. So it was probably last only changed in 2013.
Okay.
But the chapter, the public chapter 330, it went into effect on April the 15th of 20... Well, it was approved May 2nd of 2025. It passed the Senate in April.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Just a clerical thing on the back, line five, system wide is repeated.
Depends on which way you want to start with, right? One word or two? Thank you. You do that, I know you do.
Cutter, Cutter was looking the other way.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number 11 passes.
I'll move to take a break.
About five minutes, real quick, a little break here, is it okay? Everybody good? All right, welcome back, everybody, uh, let's finish this up. We are ready for agenda item number twelve, it's policy five point one zero zero, personal goals, personnel goals. And the, the, the changes align with chapter four ninety-four, which removes the requirement for educator diversity goals. So that's all we are doing is removing that requirement.
Yes, sir.
Now, get a motion to accept the new five point one one oh, it's not a new policy, it's just a revision, removing the items seven and eight.
I so move.
Motion's made, second it, do we have any discussion?
So the state ask us to take that out? So we don't worry about diversity, diversity of students anymore?
Nope. And it's happened, that has happened, uh, let's see here, let's go, uh, I'm gonna throw an example that happened last month. This is DBE contractors, like from the state of Tennessee and all the states and everything else, pretty much governed out of Washington DC and all of that. They have, Tennessee notified us, they put a hold on all requirements. Like, certain projects that were federally funded or whatever, required so much DBE participation, disadvantaged business entities required so much participation, that they wouldn't fund it. So you had to, you had to find, these contractors had to go out and find DBEs to do certain portions of the work, to get a percentage of it. They have now frozen all of that, cut it all out. There is no money's coming down to build DOT projects requiring anything with diversity. And, uh, disadvantaged stuff, and it hit, uh, for us, it hit Tennessee, Georgia, Alabama, and Florida, and Mississippi, before that we participate in. And, uh, they just basically shut it down over some kind of federal court ruling out of Kentucky or something.
Ms. Frieda, that law's about four pages long, too.
Yep.
I have, but I have, I take issue with that, is in the school setting, because my, my, uh, definition of diversity is children from rural backgrounds, children from, from inner city backgrounds, disadvantaged students that, that are, uh, not performing, you know, because of their home background. And it, I hope that this doesn't mean that teachers are just gonna teach to the normal standard expected child. I mean, we've got to, we've got to do.
Ms. Frieda, we are.
Meet the needs of the students.
You have three principals sitting there to your right.
And I guess maybe the terminology is.
Yes, ma'am, and where he asked, our principals, I promise, they're gonna meet every individual student exactly where they're at. And moving them forward from there.
Isn't this more to do with hiring practices?
Yes, ma'am.
And not with the students themselves?
Well, then you would be, but the thing of is, you would be hiring, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
To where, my examples are what I was talking about, it removed race, sex, all of that, from any consideration where it comes to working for federal dollars, or hiring for teaching, or anything in the United States, that went out the window, it doesn't matter.
Now, you gotta be qualified.
Well, it was, uh, when I read the, the, the case that happened, that, that our representative from Tennessee Department of Transportation sent, it was basically just a, uh, big massive federal lawsuit over a male that was trying to act as a female, and won. So therefore, the reaction from everybody is just, well, it's thrown out the window. I think they just totally annihilated affirmative action, but all the years on that, but, so it's, it's made its way down into stuff like this.
I don't wanna keep debating the issue, but to me, to take out, to set goals for educator diversity, that takes into consideration the diversity of the student population, I'm not looking at, I'm looking at ADHD, I'm looking at kids that, that are not, uh, the average child with, that needs additional, you know, they need additional help, but maybe that does, doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that, so.
You just can't, you can't study, you can't study it like that, the way, the way I'm taking it is, you can't study it like that anymore.
Right.
Or you're not supposed to. Like profiling, it's against the law, but what you gotta do.
I mean, everybody doesn't fit in the same page. Every child doesn't, and you have to have the, the ability to reach them in that page. And to me, uh, I just think that we've just gotten ridiculous in trying to stifle teachers' ability to, to teach because of the terminology that might mean something, you know? That's just my opinion, I just feel like that, that teachers have enough.
I think the, I think the love and the opportunity and the plan, and the plan of action of teachers and things of that nature are gonna do what they need to do. Period, anyways. I think for policy to say, to set goals for those diversity, I think that's where they're trying to get us out of, and setting goals for.
Now, I'm confident that our director, when it comes to hiring people, he's looking for qualifications. And that's what we need in school, we need qualified people to teach our kids, so.
That can make diversity of the children, you know, in the classroom, because everybody's not, doesn't learn the same way.
Yeah, but I don't think that's what they're talking about.
Learning, not, not all this other stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're talking about the students at all, I think they're talking about hiring practice.
But, but you gotta hire somebody that knows that.
Well, yes, but I don't think you're using.
You can just go hire Bobby, my husband, he's not.
I don't think you're using diversity to do it. That's what they're gonna say, they're, they're, they're wanting you to say you don't have a goal for diversity, but you're gonna hire the best fit. Regardless, regardless of the book.
I guess I'm looking at it wrong, because I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. You know, I get Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce tell us all the time, you're not hiring enough, trying to hire enough women. I'm not gonna find a woman that wants to toke rebar all day long, reinforce concrete, it's just not gonna happen.
You hire based upon the qualities, uh, based upon the qualities you need in an employee?
What I can get is probably not in jail, hopefully. In my line of work, but, but they do that all the time, you know, you're supposed to be equal opportunity employee.
We're working with people.
But I'm not gonna find a woman that, well, you just don't have enough females. Can't beg them, come to work.
Are they still doing that, or is that shifted, too?
No, I hadn't got any notices in the last month or two, so that might have stopped from that, ABC. All of the dots and.
Uh, we have a first by Ms. Bath and second by Ms., um, Mr. King.
I mean, I'm not surprised to see things like this start showing up, cutting some of that stuff out. I mean, obviously, we put our faith in the director and supervisors, that have authority and ability to hire what they feel is the best for that position anyway, no matter what, we have enough qualifications and backgrounds and things of that nature, I don't, I don't see that it's just a meltdown to remove this as recommended by the law.
I think it'll free them up to hire based on who they think is the best out for this position, and I think that's what needs to happen.
I think what it's saying is that, you can't consider the diversity of the student population when you're hiring personnel. And I have an issue with that, because someone that is teaching in a rural school, a person that has that acuity to meet the needs of the rural kids, you, you would look at that and hire them accordingly. And, uh, vice versa, if it's a, if it's a, I mean, you, we're not all the same.
We're going to, this is, this, taking this line out, not saying you're not, you're gonna hire the best.
The state is requiring.
Yeah, the law's right behind it, four pages of it.
We've just got too many, too many, huh.
The law's right behind it, four pages.
Right. Bowling is one of them, by Senator Johnson Hensley, Powers, Rose, Stevens, Watson, Bowling, Jaeger, Bailey, Crowe, Gardenhire, Jackson, and Taylor. Wonder how many of them taught school?
Well, the first line is to ensure that the director of schools recruits and employs the best qualified individuals to staff the school district. And that, it's just allowing them to do that, it's not, they're not having to hire based on sex, or based on race.
Or, or the ability of the teacher to teach a diverse population, because that's what they're taking out. Uh, it's taking out to set goals for educator diversity that takes into consideration the diversity of the student population. And when I look at diversity of student population, I'm not looking at, I'll just say that loud, I'm not looking at transgender and all this, that's, that's an entirely different topic, what I'm looking at, every child is diverse, and you've got to hire people that know how to address the, uh, diversity of the students. And if you're not gonna hire people that knows how to do that, like I said, go hire my husband, put him in the classroom.
Well, I think, you know, just like number one says, the director of schools recruits and employs the best qualified individuals to staff the school district. That's their job, their job.
So in, so in their mind, they're gonna, they're gonna hire people that can work with diverse students, it's just not saying it.
If you look at the law on section two B, I think that's where this line's coming from.
Section two.
It's just taking that, it basically, it's, you cannot employ somebody completely on their base, uh.
But that has nothing to do with that, it, this, this says, this says diversity of the student.
No, read from the start.
To set goals for educator diversity that takes into consideration the diversity of the student, it doesn't say, I, I understand, I think you need to hire the best people.
Allows this man right here, to hire the most qualified person.
Sorry, I'm not gonna get into this, I agree, as long as that, that's covers it, but I just think, I just think it's silly, I think it's silly to, to.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
Down in the ditch with something like that.
I agree.
Because it's.
All right, any more discussion? No more discussion, all?
Let's vote.
All those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion twelve passes. All right, thirteen is five point one one eight, background investigations. I think we are interjecting a little bit of stuff here, you have our policy, then you have TSBAs, and then you have our red line that, uh.
So the RAP PAC, um.
There you go.
A program, what this does is, instead of every five years, Ms. Langham having to send everybody to get fingerprinted, you know, she draws people, you've gotta go get fingerprinted again, this goes into the, um, the system, the TBI system, and if someone that is an employee goes out and they have a felony, or they have a DUI, or something like that, it pops back up to her, and so she will know that.
She won't have to send somebody for it.
She won't have to send anybody out, this is an automatic system that will keep people updated.
At my school, uh, about a week ago, there was a, a, Ms. Langham reached out to me from, from our human resources, and I had a group of twenty to twenty-five of my staff, who I, I think had gotten to their five years, you know, they were gonna need to, to be background checked again. And, uh, so we had the consent form that, that we're referring to here, and, um, every single one of them, you know, they're willing to consent to, to this program, so that they don't have to go get background checked again, you know.
Fail prints every five years, so this allows us to not have to.
Mr. Shores worked with this, with Ms. Langham, what are we missing?
I, I think you got it, it's, we have to do it every five years anyway, when we actually jump in on the RAP PAC program, then after that five years, as long as that employee stays with us, we don't have to continue. But if anything, like, uh, Ms. Swisborn said, if something happens and an employee does something unlawful, then it will automatically notify us, rather than depending upon the employee to come and tell us. It will notify us quickly, I do have one question, Coffee County Board of Education is, is marked out. I really don't understand why it would be marked out, uh, before you vote on, you know, make your decision.
That's just, that right there is just a clerical, that's for, uh, when I send it to, um, TSBA and they run it up.
I know it is marked out, I'm not sure.
Well, I will fix that.
We'll, we'll have it, if we pass this document, it'll be on the top anyways.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be, to be in our policy.
I know, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't look any more marked out.
They will fix it, they fix any typos and stuff like that, we pay them thirty-five hundred dollars to maintain these, so they fix your typos and all that.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept policy five point one one eight with the red changes, except for having Coffee County Board of Education with a red line through it on the very top?
I so move.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Who got the second, you have to tell me who got the second.
Jim. Throwing me in blanks?
Well, like I said, it's same Thompson, I had to say who I'm gonna say.
Throwing me in blanks, all right, anybody got any discussion on this? There are no offers for discussion?
No, I do have one question, this RAP program, do we currently have this?
No, we don't.
We don't, it's, it's offered through the FBI.
This, this was actually something that, uh, this, uh, Langham had brought up to us several years ago, the, the extra charge, there was a, a significant extra charge for us to be part of the RAP program, and, and it just didn't make sense at that time, but now it's our law, we have to be.
Okay.
So the extra charge is gonna, we're gonna incur some extra uh, costs due to becoming part of the RAP PAC program. And also employees that are hired on here, but after this is passed, will have to incur that cost as well.
Now, will every teacher be required to be in it, every teacher we have in the system, every employee in the system? Do they have to sign in that they're willing to do that?
And I, I'm gonna be honest, I, I need to talk to Ms. Langham on one of the questions, I, I don't have any answer.
I would think there would some, be some legalities there about that.
My, I had a conversation with Ms. Langham last week, and I, I, I certainly don't know all the ins and outs, but I, there's a, a consent form for staff members to sign. And if I understood Ms. Langham correctly, the, the staff member can elect not to consent, and that means that they would have to continue to get background checked every five years, that was my understanding.
Cause once you're part of this program, you're, you're part of the program, so you could be here for thirty years, every five years, you don't have to worry about going to get your background checked again.
Think that makes it easier also, if you were a teacher that liked to travel, and you read that, you could get your TSA pre-check and bypass all the lines through the airport a lot quicker than everybody else.
You have, that may be.
Put you in the same thing, so teachers would be able to get TSA.
Not today. Have you seen the letter?
Yeah. So, alright, any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of accepting this motion, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. That's giving me a headache. Number fourteen, policy five point three oh seven, physical assault leave, uh, I've got a note, was changed in August of twenty twenty-five, state law has changed the availability of this leave to include all employees, not just certified employees, and it is my understanding that the provided policy here with the red changes has been uh, in front of you, I'd need a motion to accept that policy with the changes, including Coffey County Board of Education at the top with a red line through it.
Kinda making me.
Changing that? Free, alright, Freedom made the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Parsley made the second. Alright, any discussion? Any more red lines in the wrong place, or? Which is not the TSBAs. Yeah. TSBAs recommendation. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor of accepting this, please say so by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. On to number fifteen, six point three oh nine, zero tolerance offenses. Alright, a change in state law has included an additional offense to the list of zero tolerance offenses to just being a valid threat of mass violence. This change is reflected in our model policy, we recommend that the board update the policy six point three oh nine to reflect this change as well. And it includes two additional TCA codes. So, I would need a motion to accept our new six point three oh nine, it's all in red, we do not have to change Coffey County Board of Education at the top. I would need a motion to accept that as amended, then we can discuss.
I still make that motion.
My second.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion now?
I have a question, line twenty, it says a student assigned to alternative school cannot attend CCCHS events, is there any reason why?
We need to add middle school.
Yes.
Enrator candidate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I got you. Yeah.
Yep, enrator candidate.
And you just put Coffey County School System again.
Yep.
Elementary.
Mm-hmm.
Elementary ball.
Just take the H out and just make it Coffey County School System.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah. Take the H in. Take the H out, okay, so we will amend that by taking the H out, right?
The CH, yeah.
Okay. Everybody in good with that? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting this with scratching the H out on line twenty of CCCHS, uh, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I appreciate that being called.
Motion passes, number sixteen, uh, awards and scholarships.
TSBAs should get rid of this.
Yeah, TSBA is getting rid of this, they do not maintain this policy, we no longer see the need to have this policy, so we recommend to delete it, awards and scholarships. Can I get a motion to delete policy six point seven oh eight, awards and scholarships?
Does this mean that there will be less awards and scholarships for the students, or?
It's just saying that TSBA is no longer maintaining this, they do not have it, if Mr. Parsley wants to keep that in his school handbook or his policy and procedures, then he could do that, but TSBA is no longer maintaining that policy.
This, this policy does not alter my plans for various recognitions and awards in the spring, you know, through the winter, it, it, it won't change what I do.
I think that's important to keep this, just as a, cause it's gonna look bad to the public if we don't have a policy on awards and scholarships, I mean, that's even refers to elementary, you know, says schools shall foster awards days for the purpose of recognizing student honors, and we do that, I'm wondering if that would kinda eliminate the, some of them.
When, when we should do that.
I get what Ms. Jones is saying, I mean, if we leave this policy in place, it still lays the groundwork for what you're gonna do anyways.
Yeah.
It's not gonna hurt, I mean, it doesn't conflict with, with your.
No.
If somebody ever have a pro, has a problem with what you do, you can say, well, look, I'm just following policy.
Right, when, when the, when the TSBA says they're, they no longer maintain this policy, I mean, in essence, does it, does it just sort of mean, I mean, there are no laws surrounding this, I mean, so they're, they're, they feel no obligation, I guess, to?
Right, and there's no laws, and it's just, you know, like Ms. Jones said, if we wanna leave it in there just to have groundwork for what we already do, I mean, it's not gonna hurt.
We feel like that's important. I don't know that they'll maintain it on our website.
Website.
Because they, we pay them to manage our policies and stuff, and if so, if it's not, will they manage, will they keep it on there?
I would think so.
They will?
Yeah, they should.
I mean, cause we change, we change their policies, you know, we change parts of the policies anyway.
Yeah, I pay them to put on the internet whatever
Yeah.
I got you. We want on the internet.
Well, i- if we're gonna maintain this one, we need to kick it back out and redo it, because a lot of this is not very applicable and outdated, and we need to blow it up and rewrite the policy then.
Or we could uh.
And it doesn't have to be some detail.
There's a lot of this. I mean.
Just my understanding, this is not looked at, in that, in the sense of keeping it so that, like Mr. Hargrove said, send it back to, so that they
Everything in here is covered in numerous other.
And revise it as needed, but what we're doing.
Everything in here is covered in numerous other policies.
And administratively at each school, they.
Students must benefit, promote advertised product or ideology will not be approved, programs must be open to all students, law or programming is, must not be uh, not place an undue burden on a student, teacher, or school. Travel requirements will be minimal, entry fees, if any, must be minimal, we don't even do that to them.
I, I don't really know what, how an entry fee would be.
A lot of it doesn't pertain to how we're doing. I don't know why that's in.
There's no entry fee, um, you know, something I noticed, and again, this is probably a longer discussion, in lines twelve and thirteen, uh, it talks about the criteria and procedures for granting awards and scholarships, and making those, uh, that information available to all students, not just graduating seniors. Something I would point out is scholarships are only available to graduating seniors, and so for us to make all that in, like, email all, for instance, email all the information about scholarships to all students, it really doesn't make a lot of sense. It's of no use to those.
Again, this was issued in two thousand and six.
Yeah.
I mean, I, but I feel like line sixteen seventeen says scholarships, grants, or loans available to students on an annual basis shall be posted in a copy to requirements, application, selection basis made available on request, I think that's very important, particularly with the, you know, the, uh, what do you, do you call that loan that the kids get? They got a deadline to, to meet it, and if we don't provide that information, there's parents that would never even know about it.
Oh, yes, I, yeah, I, we go to great lengths to provide this information, as I said from the onset, this, whether this is in board policy or not, it will not change what we do at our school.
But we, but it, that doesn't, you may not change it, but whoever's next point, they need a policy.
Then we need to, we need to rewrite the policy, in my opinion. I agree.
Yeah, I mean, this is outdated for sure, but there's some things in here that need to stay, I, I feel.
Let's pull, let's pull that one.
I suggest we update.
Let's pull that one and we'll rerun it.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'm gonna pull sixteen. Seventeen, three point four zero zero, student transportation management. Okay. Yeah, I got like years of emails. I got years of emails, I don't know. They have those.
No.
Uh, this were, was reviewed by the Director of Transportation, Tim Morris, and he had added changes that he felt was necessary. This went to the board for a first reading on August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and was pulled by Scott Hansrich to come back to committee for more clarification. In reference to the bus driver's physical and mental exams, Alex Fan with the CDPT, Student Transportation Manager, said, a district can choose to add language to their policy that accepts the annual DOT physical cards as the form in which is prescribed for the required mental and physical exam. According to the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, FMCSA regulations for DOT providers, medical professionals, a mental and physical exam are both mandated aspects of their examination process. Since the drivers are required to renew this annually, there is a built-in safeguard that should an applicant or employee fail to renew or fail to pass this exam, they would automatically be removed from the driver pool, as their license would immediately be downgraded, rendering them unable to drive a commercial motor vehicle in the case, in the case of this, it would be a school bus. So, I know what you're getting at right here is, I, I think our policy says they have to do another one besides the DOT.
I believe at the board meeting, uh, Mr. Hanser, uh, had an issue, and I, and I believe it was with the form, they were asking what kind of form that this would be that they were in reference to, and so, uh, I believe we found the answer, that that's gonna be the DOT physical, um.
Cause, like, I can vouch for exactly what was said in that, because if I don't, if I don't pass my uh, health card every year on my CDL, it don't matter if it's to drive a school bus or anything else, if I don't pass that every year, trust me, I went the last three years and forget about it and go four or five months with a, uh, actually suspended driver's license.
Mr. Sherman, Ms. Ms. Carter and I got the, a copy of a DOT physical form that Transportation had, and there's actually one line on it that states something about the mental health of the, the participant, so that's the reason why we feel like it's there on the DOT physical.
Okay.
So, and also Mr. Kuhn, in reference to that, had reached out to check on that, so in section four twelve, four point twelve point two, subsection two, it says the degree to which an individual is able to appreciate, evaluate, and adequately respond to environmental strain and emotional stress is critical when assessing an individual's mental alertness and flexibility to cope with stresses of the common motor vehicle driving. And then it goes on down here, further down in there, um, it talks about mental certification depends on comprehensive medical assessment of overall health and informed medical judgments about the impact or single or multiple conditions of the whole person. It is the degree of inappropriateness and cumulative effect of the individual's presentation and interaction that provides a cue to the individual may require a more in-depth mental health evaluation. So, I think, I mean, everybody in here was pretty much at that board meeting, I mean, I think that was the question about this policy.
Was how that's tracked, or?
Is what they, uh, what the form was gonna look like, remember, because, um, it was back and forth between Mr. Hanser and Mr. Kuhn, and they asked, you know, is it, what's it gonna have on there? Do we develop it? Do you remember that?
And then we referenced what Mr. Schors was talking about.
So, Mr. Kuhn has refer, he has sent me several emails here on this, so I believe once we've let Mr. Morris look at it and everything, that we understand now that it's the DOT physical that has that in there. And I hope I'm not saying that wrong, but that's what I understand.
There is a section on the DOT physical where the attending physician checks that, uh, there's no mental flags for this person.
Right.
There's a box that's been checked on that actual document. And Mr. Schors.
And if anybody wants to look at these emails, they're welcome to look at them.
Um, it says here that each school bus driver shall receive a certificate from the board prior to operating a school bus. When do we give out certificates? I don't think we've ever done it since I've been there.
Yeah, I don't know, why would the board be issuing?
I don't know, but that's what it said. Who does, who does, uh, who does receive the certificate?
So, I'm, I'm assuming that that is something that Mr. Um, Morris takes care of.
Then his name probably needs to be in there as the.
Uh, I think that's a waste. I mean, we don't, I'm not, I don't think we get into the uh, realms of us issuing out
Right.
driver's licenses for this district.
Well, I know that.
That's the way I look at it, I mean, I know it don't say that, but that's the way I look at it.
Well, I do know that Ms. Kuhn is a trainer for the district, and so I'm assuming that she would give them her certificate once she certifies them.
Or the Transportation Director.
Or the, right, the Transportation, right, she's doing it for him.
Would issue them.
The board.
A certificate to drive one of his buses.
You know, it could say the board slash designate, um, you know, that, there's a lot of instances where we say the principal designate, the director designate.
Well, I mean, your Transportation Director is the man that's, you know, organizing your transportation, monitoring your transportation, operating your transportation in order to know who he's got behind the wheel of his transportation.
Yeah, you, I think it should be that Transportation Supervisor, and then the next sentence says, issue of a certificate to a school bus driver shall be based on qualifications of school bus drivers to determine the director of schools, so that shows he's, he's.
So that shows he's, he's giving the certificate based on the qualifications of what the director. So do we want to?
I know he's watching. He's probably, I feel like he's trying to push buck over on him. Push.
We haven't had a first or second.
Okay, so we will need a motion, not necessarily open-ended, but a motion to accept this policy as amended with a few of the changes that we discussed that we can get into discussion. If you remember what those are, you can name that as a motion.
Yes, cuz I'll need to write and fix them.
And we'll get this on the floor. Been there, but.
Also, before we decided, is the board the one that shall? I guess we would be the ones to require the physical and mental examination. Okay. Are we the ones that are gonna revoke the certificate of the school bus driver? Or would that be the?
Thank you.
So that would be the, again, the transportation supervisor.
We can, let's get the, let's get a motion to get this on the floor. We can do it as posted, and then we'll just, we're fixing to amend it up. So let's get a motion on the floor to accept revised policy 3.400.
I'll make a motion that we accept the revised policy of 3.400.
I'll second that.
You got a second? All right, now, let's all discuss, start at the top. Let's go through these lines. I'm just going to start, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to you guys to tear whatever apart. I think line 17. We need to scratch out board. And I think that should be the transportation director.
I agree.
All right, I'm sorry.
I've got it, Liz.
You got it, okay.
And that's where I'm at on that. Ms. Beth, where was that other?
It's in line 21.
There it is.
21.
Mm-hmm. So we need to take out.
I don't think we're the one that's gonna be revoking this certificate.
Right.
He's gonna give it, he's revoking.
Yeah.
So it needs to be transportation?
Director, yeah.
Okay.
I think they're using supervisor instead of director though. Well, he's a director. You see, now that might need to be changed too.
Do we wanna change 26, where it says transportation supervisor to director?
That would be consistent with.
Okay. What, is that his title? Is he a supervisor or a director? Oh, he's not a director though?
He's transportation supervisor.
All right, so we need to move, we need to move back up. Instead of saying transportation director, transportation supervisor.
Oh, I thought he was a director, I'm sorry.
I think you're fine either way. It's not gonna, it's.
Just, I'd say it's being consistent.
Hey, I heard he missed director. He should be happy with me.
I'm not, okay. And then we flip the page over.
What is the TAPT? And that's on line eight, TAPT.
Tennessee, or, I'm into their trains and stuff, I can't remember what it's called.
Okay.
Transportation, Tennessee Transportation.
Public Transportation, Tennessee Association of Public Transportation.
Maybe it is, yeah.
Okay.
I could come up with some other.
Well played, Paul. Well played.
Tennessee Association of Pupil Transportation.
Close.
They changed it.
Public.
School bus visits.
Everything else, oh, that page looks okay.
These comments in yellow are from TS. This is school board.
I think the yellow is from TSBA, the red is from?
Where it's been merged together.
Correct.
It's been where it's merged together with Coffee Counties and the TSBA.
Yeah, if they're yellow, they, yeah, you told me that's begin with, and I forgot. All right, any, any other changes, any more discussions?
Question, line 16, written complaints shall be submitted on forms located the Department of Transportation. I mean, we're referring to the bus garage, I assume, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Transportation, at the Transportation Department office?
I think it needs to be an ads.
It's actually a department of transportation here, but that's what we call it. Depends on who you're talking to.
The chairman of line 12.
Some say bus garage, some say transportation.
Should that say website? Their website, you can find these forms?
Robert on line 12.
Yes, sir.
All complaints shall be submitted to the supervisor, comma, transportation supervisor. Do we need to drop the word supervisor?
One of those, or swap them. Well, yeah, drop, drop the first, drop the first supervisor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So go to the transportation supervisor.
Double up deal there.
All right, gotcha.
On number two, 15 and 16, do you want it, do y'all wanna make the change like Mr. Parsley talked about of the, the Department of Transportation or to our Transportation Department?
Transportation Department sounds more like what we.
What we are, so.
We use the terminology.
We can mark out the Department of Transportation, and we'll just call that Transportation Department.
Like you said, bus garage is what everybody really knows it.
We all, we all sound a little bit, yeah.
We could even say Coffee County School of Transportation.
So it won't be on the, the complaint form won't be on the district's website? That was marked out, yes. I believe they have the forms there at the. So if somebody wanted to make a complaint, they'd have to go up there? It says they can do it via phone and the person that's fit. But the forms are just there at the, they're not on, not online.
They may be submitted.
So if Matt answers the phone.
Where, where is it marked out? Where is it marked out they won't be on the website?
Right there. To a, right there. Written complaint shall be submitted on forms located at.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
On the district's website, and that's marked out.
To me, to me, that is suggesting, don't put it in the mail, for instance, but because, you know, the line 15, you know, it indicates you could, you could go up there and submit it, you could make a phone call and explain it.
Written complaint shall be submitted on forms located.
Well, it does say mail. It says mail in line 15.
The word located puts it in there.
Yeah, you just gotta go up there and get the phone.
Yeah, no, I think they, I think they do need to be available on the website. I mean, that's, surely the forms don't change to where if you just put the PDF on the website.
I don't know.
Mr. Daywood, is that hard to just put that form on their website?
Not just a PDF, though.
Could be just figuring out where he's falling into that.
So take out.
So I think we'll put it on the district's website back in there.
Okay, I understand.
What was that?
I'd assume it'd be under human resources. That's where all the other forms would be.
So written complaints shall be submitted on forms located at Transportation Department or on, at the Transportation Department or the.
Or on D District.
Or on. Does the Transportation Department have its own website? I mean, have its own section? Its own page? It probably should.
Now, they can get the forms from there.
I'm just asking, do they have a section on the website?
And then they can submit them to them, and on their form, they have an email or a number to call.
I think that's a good idea.
Forms may be submitted in person.
All be a phone, mail, email, yes. And so, and so it looks, it'd be like it would be under the Transportation Department where you put that form, cuz that's where I would look.
All right, is there anything else? Take it up, Mr. Reed.
I apologize for interrupting, but there is. Transportation Department has its own.
Section in the district.
Okay.
Yes, with that being said, it's mostly a parent portal. And normally, and I don't care, it doesn't make any difference to me, I can put them in both places. But where everybody usually goes and gets their forms is under the Employee Human Resource section, just for consistency. So it doesn't matter.
Well, it'd be like, if you had, if you wanted a complaint form at the Transportation Department, on your Transportation Department link in our website, it'd be posted on the homepage of it, of you got a complaint.
Right, right. It's just, this whole page is geared toward parents.
Either that or put a 1-800, how's my driving sticker on the back, and have it right here.
And there is a question on their link that says, Google I contact if I notice a bus driving recklessly. So that's on there. I mean, there's a, you know, there's like a little question and answer thing there.
You know, usually if there's a complaint, you pick up the phone and call and say, I have a complaint and there's this problem, and can you check into it? You know, I don't know that we wanna make them fill out a form every time, but that's what we wanna do, it's good, I'm just saying.
Well, if they gotta complain, if somebody's gotta complain about one of the buses, they need to put their name.
I'm sorry, I stepped out of the room. This isn't the help form page.
No, no.
Oh, this is, oh, then obviously the transportation place. I'm sorry, I thought we were filling the, the help form.
No.
I, I think they oughta, they, they should have to put a name to it.
Oh, without that, they need to let us know who they are. I'm just saying, sometimes they just call.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna take the complaint any which way, but.
This is what I had, and.
Hopefully, they'll go, yeah.
The week.
Yeah, I think it needs to be online, under Transportation.
Well, we, we put that back.
I put it on Transportation website.
Okay, is there anything else? Anybody see? No more discussion on this one. All those in favor of accepting this policy 3.400 with the changes that we have noted and then went through? All those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seventeen passed. Number 18.
We've already passed this, but TSBA recently updated this policy to align with the law. And all we're adding to this is we have five business days of the date of records requests to provide records in the next school. That's all we're adding to that. And that is line, part of line 14 and 15.
And that, yes.
That law was passed in March, and TSBA, there were just a few changes, and we're just keeping up with the changes.
Right, can I get a motion to accept policy 6.600 with the changes on line 14 and 15 as we've been given?
I so moved.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Most of the main motion, second, during any discussion? Here, nine, all those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, none. Motion passes. Number 19, 5.119 Employment of Retirees. Oh, state law has recently changed the option for employing retirees. See Public Chapter 159. I do believe this is putting some language in here.
It does, it includes, uh, a little language that will hold us a little more accountable in owing us to those guidelines that, hiring retirees.
If somebody's going to retire, and I think a good example that I called on to earlier was if one of the principals approached that person going to retire and said, hey, retire, get your retirement, once it goes through, come on back, I'll hire you back, or a part-time kinda deal or something, it kinda keeps that out and puts it.
Cannot be redet, predetermined.
And you have to stay out sixty days.
Yes, ma'am, and, and that was the law before, but kinda cutting deals. And oh, by the way, if, you know, I'm hiring Ms. Frida to teach PE, it's gotta be a hard-to-fill position, you know? Well, there may be a hundred PE teachers out there. Now, if she teaches physics, might be a different story. So just holds us, the language holds us much more accountable for hiring employees that are retired.
So if I can get a motion to approve policy 5.119 with the changes in blue, ma'am?
Well, I was telling Ms. Beth, so TSBA audit, so when I send it back to them, you know, I told you that they changed it up.
They send back in the blue.
So like if she's done some, and then Nolan works on it, some, or something like that, I, there's no way of changing it. It automatically gives me those colors. I, I cannot figure out how to change it.
So it'll be the 5.119 in blue. If I can get a motion to accept and approve that?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, and seconded, it is during any discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of accepting this motion, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, motion passes. Uh, number 20. Policy 1.1021, Student Ambassador to the Board. Public Chapter 359 requires boards that operate at least one high school to adopt a policy authorizing a student board member. Boards that already have policy on student board members or student advisory groups may maintain the current language. Based on this new requirement, we created the model policy below. This model contains suggested language for criteria, and we encourage you to update this model to the best serve your district. So we have been provided our current. Nope.
Yes, that's your current.
That's our current.
That's your current.
Okay, that's our current. And we don't see any changes on here right now, unless somebody wants to make it.
No, that's your current, wait, that, that's Coffee County, lay it over. And then that's TSBA's.
On the back?
No. Like, like, pick that one up, that's TSBA, and there's your one that's merged.
Ah.
The next one.
They call them different things.
They'll go to the next one. There you go.
Yeah, okay.
And it's, everything's marked out except till you go to the back, till it says general.
And do you go to the back, and then it would just be that in the back?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that, I wondered what's going on here.
Yeah, I can too. So, basically, this is a rebuild of the policy 1.1021. Cutting it down to about ten lines.
This is just talking about student, we have student ambassadors. We do not have student board members.
Right.
So there's a difference, and the difference is that this is for student board members. That's what the policy's changed.
Let me ask you, is there anything wrong with the current policy we have versus the word they're talking? I do, I do not. But to get this on the floor, I don't think I made it, I don't think I got a lot of them. We've been through some of them.
Yeah.
If I can get a motion to either just keep the policy we currently have or go with the. Uh, if I can get a motion to either just keep the policy we currently have or go with the.
Well, we have to update it because it, it is by law, public chapter three fifty-nine, so we do have to update that.
But.
Because hours said student ambassadors.
We got to update every policy every year, supposed to.
But this is a, I mean.
Whether with changes or no change.
So we can't have a policy that's student ambassador anymore, it's got to be student, student board member. Because, I mean, it's two different titles.
Right.
I, I guess a question I have is, are, are they intended to have two different roles or are they the same role, just different name? I mean.
They doing away with ambassador?
I think we're supposed to have a student board member.
No, it doesn't.
When?
It doesn't say, if you look at the law. It just says student representative.
When, when I look at the updated policy, you know, it references student representatives, to me, that would be student ambassador.
Correct, so it's, it's kind of, that's kind of just our term.
I, I'll say this, the, the wording I see on this updated policy, in my opinion, there's nothing there that conflicts with how we do it. That's my opinion, I.
So it's either one, it's, we can either keep the same one we have or we can govern the new, but if you govern the new, are we going to stop calling them student ambassadors and call them student board member or we're going to call them student ambassador?
Well, this.
On the new policy or we're going to keep the one that we have that?
This says if the board chooses to appoint a student board member, so.
No, that's your policy, the law doesn't say, the law doesn't say a student board member. The law says student representative.
Okay.
So we can call them in, we can call them a board member, we can call them an ambassador.
Well, when you call them a board member, they, they get to, uh, have a lot of input.
Right, so.
I like the ambassador.
I like the ambassador the way we do it, I think, I think what we're doing here is our guts and meet the data of the, of the policies and I just don't see, I think we're.
Everything I've heard is, if you already got something said, uh.
Did I get a, did I get a motion?
No.
Sorry, I spoke this one after a little bit, but anyways, I need a motion for one or the other, please.
You know, one, one thing I noticed, again, the, the updated one here, which is, is fairly general, it's, it's brief. Again, I don't see anything that contradicts what we do. One thing we could do is just change, um, just change the words and then update it to student ambassador. And then, and then let it be as is.
That's your motion?
That, I, I move that we use, uh, lines thirteen through thirty of the, the new updated policy page, with the exception that we change, uh, student board members to student ambassadors, whether that be singular or plural throughout the wording of this updated policy.
I'll second that motion.
And that was page two, lines thirteen through.
Yes, page two, lines thirteen through thirty.
All right. I need to second it. Any discussion?
Does anyone have issue, the way this reads, you know, we, we have rotated SGA members for a couple of years now, in my opinion, it works really well because those kids are really involved in the school and you get different perspective. And another positive from the student perspective is with, with the ambassadors being so involved in the school, it's difficult for a person to be at every board meeting for that duration with all of their school activities going on. So they have to kind of pick. Uh, and, and our rotating allows, you know, I, I can guarantee we're going to have ambassadors here. And they're very involved students and are going to represent the school very well. I, I don't necessarily think any of the wording needs to change, just, just understand that the ambassadors do rotate.
Is it open, who is it open to, do they apply or do you appoint them?
It would be, it would be, so our student government is elected by the student body. We have criteria, grade behavior and whatnot, uh, to be on the ballot if they are interested in running. And if they are elected by the student body, they become a part of the student government. I believe there may be twenty-four members on the SGA, could be off a, a member or two. And we rotate the upperclassmen as the ambassadors.
So they, so the student ambassador comes from the student government?
From, yes, and so that, they're great representatives of the school.
I can only remember one time that we had student ambassadors who contributed their unique perspective and opinions. So usually they're just telling about what's happening at the school, right? And so they're not really contributing to what's done in the board meeting. I did enjoy those young men telling us what they thought of our cell phone policy.
Uh, what was the last thing you said?
Sorry.
The young men telling us what they thought of the cell phone policy. I, I enjoyed that, I, I thought that was good, so.
You know, and I mean, if, if, if you all, you know, and this isn't really about the policy necessarily, but if you all want me to encourage them to share their perspective on whatever topic it might be, I could do that. I, I don't know.
They've all read that.
I think we have enough.
I remember one night they did it.
I think we have enough diversity on the board.
Can you selectively say to this student?
Might want to talk about this or that.
Well, you can share your opinion, but then you have some students you may not want them to share their opinion. So you probably have to be a little selective on that.
One, one thing, and I, I'll say this because I'm here most of the time. Occasionally, one of you will ask the ambassadors what they think of a topic. I, I love it when you do that, and I wouldn't encour, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't guess I would encourage you to do that just to do it, but, you know, there, there are things that you really do want to know what our students think, I, I would encourage you.
And we ask and we do, I think, I don't think we've got a wrong.
You do that from time to time.
Yeah, so.
I think they're already doing it.
You do.
We got any more discussion, we got any more discussion on this?
No, that was it, that's all I had.
All right, all those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Number twenty-one, five point five zero zero, discrimination harassment of employees sexual, racial, ethnic, and religious. This policy is being updated in response to public chapter two ninety-three. This new state law requires boards to include the definition of.
Anti-semitism.
You did good.
You did good.
And anti-discrimination policies. The full definition is included in the updated version of policy four point one zero zero and policies five point five zero zero and six point three oh four have been updated to refer to that definition. Once again, we're back on the race, sex, all that kind of stuff.
So, I'll need a motion to accept the five point five zero zero that is in red, and then we can get into discussion and mark it up all you want to.
I so, I so move.
I'll second that.
All right, Ms. Ginch, motion, and Mr. Cordell, second. So, okay. I'll say you, Ms. Frida.
I'm fine. I don't discriminate against anybody. I, I can add some more, I can add some more in here, I don't discriminate. I think this is fine, I think that's, you know.
Okay.
It's just as expected, I'm sure.
Any changes or anything, anybody else got? All right, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor of accepting this as changed and amended, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, let's see here, number twenty-two. I got ahead of myself. Uh, I'm going to read it off here, six point three oh four, student discrimination, harassment, bullying, cyberbullying, and intimidation. Can you help me with that if somebody's on top of it, because I got all my stuff.
This policy is being updated in response to public chapter two ninety-three. This is a new state law, um, that requires boards to include the definition of anti-semitic.
So we got to put that in the same policy, that's what the next page, that's what.
So that's just updating that, okay.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept that with the red is presented?
I make that motion.
I will second.
Motion made, seconded, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Final one. Man, that sounded weird. Policy six point three oh eight, bus safety and conduct. Okay, I asked for this one to be put on this to, uh, come back up for discussion here. I have a few issues with some of the items in this current policy. And, um, that's the justice, we're going to, motion to bring it on the table to either accept or amend. Probably just accept this, except for review, I guess that would be the motion to accept the review.
I so move.
And, uh.
I'll second.
But finishing up what I was saying, uh, I wholeheartedly do not think that lines, it starts in line fourteen, goes through fifteen and sixteen on page one. I do not, uh, I just do not feel like that the principals, and I'm not, I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody here, but when we're talking about discipline on the buses, out on these roads with other students, in an environment that is a big, in my opinion, it's a big difference between disrupting of a teacher in a classroom or disrupting a driver on the bus on the road, driving other students. I do not think the principal needs to determine, I do not think that, I do not think that the principal needs to determine when that kid gets to go back on the bus or if they did. If that makes sense, if a child is removed from the bus or if punishment is agreeable. I think we're going to have to bring transportation into this to say, we can't do this. We're endangering literally the lives of remaining students on this from disruptions or something to the system. I think our policy just basically lays it down and says that the principal has the final say.
Mr. Anderson, do you, um, do you want to share any kind of what the process is now as far as, not that you cornered the market on bus discipline, I'm going to ask your partners.
Uh, we, we follow, and I say we because my assistant principals handle ninety-nine percent of these bus reports. Um, but we follow what is given as the district policies and procedures. There's a sheet consequences and they follow that verbatim. And so that, that is the order in which we take care of these.
Thank you, Ms. Varsley, same.
The same, I have the sheet on my desk, I refer to that. Um, I call the parents, I make them aware that they've been, been put off the bus. Um, I'll ask them if they can get the student there. And, um, occasionally, if the parent has issues, I will call the bus driver first and ask them and get their opinion and see if it's agreeable, but I, I see what you're saying because I'm not on that bus.
Yeah.
And I, I don't, I don't know, so.
And, and, and I just feel like, I feel like that when it comes down to it, that if, you know, if a bus driver finally speaks up or the transportation supervisor, not director, speaks up and, look, this is not going to work, and the driver, this, I can't do this, they've got to have an area in here for that final because the buck really needs to stop with the driver of the Transportation Department. And that school is off, rolling, off property of the school. It's going to have to be transportation that, that.
Well, ultimately, ultimately, it comes down to safety, you know, and it, for instance, if a student's disruptive, it doesn't even have to be violent, but disruptive, I mean, we've got lives at stake.
Right, and, and, and it may be, you know, we also look at a few other things, such as, you know, five days off on the bus, but you do it again, you're going, you know.
There's.
You're going to walk, you're done.
Yeah, there's.
Back up a little bit quicker to the point that they're just so unruly or whatever, I mean, that's disorderly conduct and the rest will, you know, sign petitions against them.
You know, one thing.
Have the SRO take them on out here if they can't, because once you get into that motor vehicle and you get over into those transportation rules and guidelines of our drivers that they're having to follow to keep their license and everything else, you're in a totally different ballgame to where showing your little behind on the bus can get you in a lot worse trouble than possibly in the school building, if that makes sense. I think we're going to have, I think we're really going to have to look at these school bus offenses and these school bus items and really just flip the whole page of, that's not where you get to get away with acting fool.
I think something to remember is riding the bus is a privilege. And, and I try to remind our students of that, even when I was a principal at the elementary level, I tried to remind our students of that. But it does seem like it's just the opposite, they expect students to be able to ride regardless of behavior.
And, and, and it is what it is, I mean, that's just where we're going to have to stand fast and stand strong in.
I, I hadn't even shared because I wanted, you know, folks to understand the entire process. And it's hard to dis, I mean, you're taking the bus driver's word and, and we'll do that. They're the ones in charge of that mobile classroom.
Right.
Well, when I, when I read, when I read the, uh, bus incident reports.
Mm-hmm, I was shocked.
Wow.
It's.
I was shocked.
I, I don't, I don't see how, and I'm, I'm going to be honest when I say this, I don't see how we don't have police cars the next morning setting at these schools, rounding these kids up that have done some of this stuff and signing petitions on them and letting them introduce them into a little bit of the law and consequences to your actions.
I mean, wasn't there even a.
And some of them are just.
One of them?
Extreme, extreme.
I mean, and some of them, we dealt with some pretty hard things through the board here that we think that's all that's here. But you, you do the same thing on the bus, it counts as doing the same thing here in the school, it should be the same punishment.
Right.
Well, I agree, I think the bus drivers should be in charge of, of the discipline. But also too, that we shouldn't wash our hands of what these kids are doing on the buses because sometimes it's indication of something that can be helped. For instance, if a kindergarten kid is on that bus, say exposing himself or whatever, there's something, that child needs to be addressed. You know, somewhere or another, get, get helped, something's going on. And a lot of times, that's a picture of, if you look at those reports, I'm, I'm just like Beth, it was like, oh my goodness, how can a bus driver even be safe with some of these things that are going on? But that should be part of a needs assessment at each school. Look at that, look at that, uh, report each month, is, is it the same child? Uh, is, you know, what age group are they? And not, and teachers have so much on them, but if I, if I were in the classroom and I had a child acting that way and it was told me, this is what this child's doing on the bus, I would try to find out what's going on and help that child. And maybe, maybe we need to address some of these issues. We've got to discipline, I'm not saying that, but go a little bit further.
This is a whole lot more of a discussion than right here tonight.
Right, we have communication.
And that's why I just asked for a review because this is probably something that needs to come before the, the whole board. Or, or the work session.
If we have a work session, we can add that.
And we really need to, we need, come to a determination either through the work session and that would give the next policy committee something to put together on paper that could go before the board to even go further.
So are you thinking that instead of administration doing the bus reports, part of the consequences, that would come from the bus drive, Mr. Morris?
Uh, I think there's going to have to be some continuity there. I think when it comes down, when it comes down to the. it comes down, when it comes down to the honest driver that's putting their life at stake, and the rest of the students on that bus, life at stake, I think it needs to come down to some of their discretion and transportation, probably via the transportation supervisor, or designee of his, that the bus drivers can come to with concerns, questions, things of that nature, to where we can properly decipher, rather than the principal having the final say of, well, I don't care, because I don't want to listen to mom, he's going back on the bus, or she's going back on the bus, you see what I'm saying? I think we've got to have something in there where they can finally sit back and say, no. Ultimately, I'm sure somebody will have to break the tie.
And there are times, I will, I will say this, there are times that Mr. Morris will say, you know, he sends a report, this is going on, this is a third or fourth offense, whatever, you know, we would recommend for this child to be off the bus.
Oh, yes, I agree, I agree, there's a lot of continuity already, but I also know for a fact, there's not some in some other places.
Okay, sure.
So we've got to get it on paper.
I think.
If it, if it did go to the transportation driver, I would still like a copy of the ticket, so I would know, like, the child was put off and.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think everything kind of goes, I think everything kind of goes, but the way this policy is left right now, they don't have no final say.
So.
They don't have no final say, so.
So one thing, one thing, I, you all may do the same thing, uh, you sort of alluded to it earlier, uh, let, let's say there's a fairly serious issue on a bus report, but, but it's, you know, you, you can't always understand the extremity by reading three or four sentences. I, I think we understand that, it's, it's always good to talk with somebody, um, it's, it's been over seven years now since I was in AP role doing this, but it's common for my APs to, to call the bus garage, talk with Tim, or talk with Matt.
Yeah, sure.
And say, hey, tell me more about this, and as Leah said, it's typical in those situations where it's not just a black and white, these are the consequences, what do y'all think, what do y'all think, what do y'all want here, and I, I mean, every time.
We have some that don't, and there's got to be some, I'm not saying, I, I kind of like our, our policies, really good, except we do not leave any opportunity for transportation to finally speak up, oh, whoa, you know, when I looked at the bus report, and I see a threat of violence, mass violence, on a bus report, that should be no different than a threat of mass violence while they're in the school building.
Mm-hmm. It's hard to disagree, it's hard to disagree.
Should have been dealt the same way, but it wasn't dealt with the same way.
We need to have a discussion with admin and the bus driver, and include transportation at the, the transportation department as well, it, it, it doesn't need to be just, you just go through, easily, it, there needs to be talk, there needs to be discussion, and, and if, if we have admin, it's not talking to bus drivers, they need to be.
Yes, they should.
Uh, there's.
If they're issued five days off on the bus, but, oh, on day three, uh, well, I can't bring my child to school that day, you're going to have to pick him up, well, just come on Monday then, and we'll, we'll pick him up today, and then we'll come on Monday.
I agree, I agree with.
I'm out on that, that's ridiculous, that's.
I think we'll, uh, we'll discuss this more at next week's principals meeting on Wednesday, and I would love for us to revisit this during our work, November work session.
Another thing that plays into this, and I know we're kind of coming to an end here, but another thing that plays into it unfortunately is, uh, the federal government, uh, you might say saddles us with, uh, you know, expectation for chronic absentee rate, and minimizing that, and you know, when students reach a, you know, a specific number of absences, um, you know, it, it impacts our, our rate, you know, there's dollars attached to things like that, and, you know, sometimes even being off the bus impacts attendance.
I expect that, and it is what it is.
I agree, I agree.
But I'll never weigh a dollar over safety, welfare, discipline.
See, that should be weighed in the, in the valuation of attendance for rural schools that have, that have buses, because it's not apples to apples, if you've got a city school, you don't deal with that.
Uh, folks, is that it? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
I'll second.